It's six oh one, we'll call the meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll stay standing for the invocation, please.
Good evening. Lord, we thank you for this Tuesday, August 23rd. We pray for your wisdom in making decisions today. We ask, as stated in Psalm 90:17, for your favor to rest upon us and for you to establish the work of our hands. Please bless and guide these elected officials, all the employees and citizens of this great city. Amen.
Mike, if you'll take the roll, please.
All right, Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valerius has stated he would be late for the record. Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally. And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of August 9th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And we get to some presentations. I'm very glad to see the majority, if not all, of the festivities commission is here this evening. I want to present certificates of recognition to the Allen Park Festivities Commission for outstanding dedication and continued commitment to the city of Allen Park and producing the Allen Park Street Fair in this, the fortieth year of the street fair. Mayor and council wish to extend their thanks and express their deepest appreciation on behalf of the entire community for the many years and countless hours the commission members and other volunteers have devoted to making this event an annual success. Thank you, and if you would please come forward when I call your name. Cynthia Rivera, Chair. Isabel Barbosa Rios. Tina Gavarecki Rigetti. Maria Lally. Philippa Mateikas. Lauren Rivera Bealak. And Kyle Walagora. We thank you very much, and we're going to have council members make comments to you. Shoot.
And I had asked you to respond to make comments also. I think this has been something in my mind that's been a long time coming, having observed your invitation, and you get the spares.
Oh, thank you.
For quite some time. Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say that my commission is the best. We work the hardest, we work, we've already had two meetings, and the street fair's only been two weeks because we have a lot of stuff to do and we already get started. But without these dedicated citizens, I don't know what we do. And the street fair gives back to the police, the rect department, the DPS, the city in many ways. So all I say is thank you to all of them.
Well, we thank you too, and again, one of my goals was to have commissions come before us. I still would like your commission to come back and at some point really tell people what it is you do because I don't think they have a full appreciation. They go, they attend, and some, they've always got some comments or some criticism. They have no clue as to the work that goes into this. And I can, I can only assume that I'm seeing the surface of it. It's a great endeavor.
And it goes farther than us. It's, some of them out there too are my helpers, and we have many more. It takes a village to run this, and we do well, and we don't have any problems, I mean, like, you know, bickering. Maybe they'll quit on Saturday night, but other than that.
And we're never coming back.
They were never coming back.
And two days later, there they are.
And we have a meeting, and we have to finish things. So no, but thank you very much.
And if you'll just stay around because I know that council members would probably.
No problem.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you. I think that something I say up here a lot is the thing that goes from being a city to like being a community is having those chances to interact with your neighbors, to have those social interactions. And the street fair is like the one event that is, the entire city comes together for. Unfortunately, I got married last year on the street fair weekend, and then I was like, next year I'll be there, but I was like, oh, that'll be my first year anniversary. So my second year anniversary, we'll be spending at the street fair.
I just want to thank you guys for doing what you do. You guys are the best. I see you guys operate, and I'll tell you what, you put a lot into it. I am very proud to be part of that committee.
Yes, you are.
Very, you did a good job, all of you, and all of the other people out there. You know who you are. Thank you.
Thank you to the KFC also.
Just going to say thank you for your hard work and dedication. I don't have to tell you that you do it, it shows, and I know the community really enjoys everything else you've done besides the street fair, and we're going to keep going on, as you said, you've already had two meetings, and that's just astounding to hear. So we're hearing and seeing more and more. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys do a fantastic job since the last few meetings I've talked about, and I do appreciate what you guys did at Pocket Park as well. And also to Tina, I saw the interview you did on Live in the D and all, and fantastic job too, Tina, and just keep, keep up the good work every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are unbelievable. To say it's remarkable is a very, that's an understatement. I think I've been to all forty of these, and even the ones before when they were held at the park over here with the parkables and stuff, but every year comes off, seems flawlessly, and you guys, I know you work very, very hard. Appreciate everybody in your committee and everybody, all the volunteers, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I won't read what I had written because I said most of it there, but to me, it's incredible that you have a seven-member commission and what you accomplish. And again, I don't think people fully understand how much work goes into an endeavor like that and the things you have to deal with up to and including that day, plenty of running around going on. And I think you just have our thanks and our admiration, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to organizational business on the city administrator's report, which will be delivered this evening by our finance director.
Good evening, everybody. The street improvement village continues. Hard Rock Cafe. Every time, every time. Hard Rock Concrete is pouring the east side of Rosedale Boulevard from Moore to Wick today. They are removing the concrete asphalt on the east side of Park Avenue from Champagne to Angelique in preparation of pouring concrete sometime next week. With the storm, sewer pipe installation completed on Philomen Boulevard from Park Avenue to Caldwell, Hard Rock should start removing the old concrete shortly. The sectioning program, Sivone Cement continues to work on the Wick Road straightaways from Lawrence Avenue to Rosedale Boulevard. They will be moving to the area of Shenandoah Ave and Secot Avenue next, and then downtown alleys behind the American Legion and White Avenue near the community center. Tom and I do have a bet as to whether or not Wick will be open for the middle school. I hope he wins.
Yeah, me too.
The asphalt paving program, the infrastructure improvements for Arno from Beatrice to Warwick have been completed. They're waiting for a start date from Al's Asphalt. Water main replacement, Brico Excavating has started the Winona Avenue project from Champagne Road to Ecourse. They will be installing the water main on Thursday. Big moves today for the bond closings. The MTF bond of 9.5 million and the capital improvement bond for two and a half million is scheduled to close September 1st. The MTF bond is for road construction on Rosedale from Champagne to Southfield and Reek from Goddard to Wick. The capital improvement bond is for water main replacement on Reek Road from Goddard to Wick as well. SME Environmental will be starting the Phase One Environmental Assessment at 6834 Park Avenue as part of the DCC Brownfield Consortium Assessment Grant. That is actually the dry cleaners. The ice surface at the arena will be ready to go August 27th. The fire department is planning to host their 2022 Open House on Sunday, October 9th, from 12 to 3. The city administrator, Sandy Blakeney, Dan Blakeney, met last week with the architects from Detroit Architectural Group to look over the existing conditions of the library so a plan for moving forward can be developed.
May I have our motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Now we come to public comments. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live, do not give your full address, and you are limited to four minutes. Since no one is coming forward, we will close the public comments and come to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, claims, and accounts in the payroll report. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins? I'm sorry, Mr. Marcos.
I'll second it, though.
Okay, second by Mr. Blevins, coming into my right ear, so. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Come to Resolution One, the appointment of Robert Fulton to the position of Director of Parks and Recreation with a salary of $73,500 to be effective July 27, 2022. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Schleck. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Congratulations, Mr. Fulton. You are now our Director of Parks and Recreation. Resolution Two, the resolution to approve an emergency authorization to outfit the Dix Horga Sanitary Sewer Overflow Station and Vine Sanitary Sewer Overflow Station with meters and data loggers at a cost of $85,522 from account 59254598700. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Comments or questions? I think perhaps if Mr. Murray would come up and just advise in general the purpose of this resolution.
Hello. We have four points of overflows in the city, four when our sanitary gets too inundated from rainwater typically. That is for us to try to save people's basement, businesses, and other areas that we could have of concern. This goes into typically the creeks or something called the LeBlanc Drain, which ends up in the creek eventually. It's a diluted sanitary, obviously, from all the water from the rain. These are two stations that neither have meters nor do they have a sensory system that helps us determine they've started pumping and when they've ended pumping. Eagle has rules on this that state you have to have meters for volume, and you have to have on and off times and report it within 24 hours. Therefore, we are trying to outfit these stations that were built probably in about the 70s that never had that need at the time to get in compliance with Eagle.
Any questions?
Tom, is this a new pump or?
No, these pumps have been in, well, the pumps itself have been rebuilt several times, but the stations itself with the pumps and everything have been in since the 70s, late 70s. This is just new, like meters we have to add to the piping system that does not exist now in the piping system. And then it will be electronically administered to data loggers. What those are is that tells our system, shoots a signal to the system that our retention basin and our tunnel are on, and gives us on your phone, your computers, or anything of that nature for our staff to see the levels when they're coming on and off so we can turn around and report that as soon as that may happen. It's not a very often occurrence, that's why this doesn't come up often about this. This year we've had none, I can tell you that because we've been watching since we've been told. We can tell if they turned on, and then we've instructed staff for the time being until we can get these added to make sure they report to higher staff when they get warned that something's come on. And we've had zero so far this year, but we had nine last year, and that's what caused this.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Resolution has passed. Resolution to approve the smart municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year 2023 and to allocate the funding for the senior transportation program. Motion.
Motion.
By Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Blevins. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution has passed. Now we come to the first and second reading of proposed ordinance number 04-2022. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd, second by Mr. Schleck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Corver, will you read?
First reading by title only of proposed ordinance 04-2022, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities by the repeal and readoption of Division 10 Historical Commission to update the division. Second reading by title only of proposed ordinance 04-2022, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities by the repeal and readoption of Division 10 Historical Commission to update the division.
Thank you. And now we come to council comments. This evening is our leadoff is Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, it's very special thank you to the Festivities Commission for all their hard work that they did in the street fair and any other projects they've done and will be doing in the future. Hard work and dedication year after year truly shows. Grant again to Robert Fulton for his new Parks and Rec Director. Look forward to your leadership there. Additionally, I want to say a special thank you to all those that attended my son's fundraiser for autism this past weekend that donated or attended with the sauce made by our very own Mayor Pro Tem, so if you haven't, I encourage you to get out there when he does make it again for another function. All proceeds will be donated directly to the Autism Alliance of Michigan, so it's a great organization to get around, and if you haven't donated yet, we're still fundraising, and it's a great opportunity to get involved. Want to update the community briefly on my trip to Washington DC. As I briefly mentioned, I was through elected officials to protect America via University of San Francisco. It's a tie. I was able to win to a cold icebreaker, symbol of the University of San Francisco, so I proudly wear it, and also can't see, but I have US capitals on my socks that I bought when I was at the Capitol, so. But with that being said, I was, learned a lot of new skills that I look forward to bring forward to our city and share with my fellow council members, and really was a great opportunity, life-changing in fact, I would say. Finally, I want to wish everyone a very happy and safe Labor Day since we won't meet again until after then, and please ask you to remember, to recognize the many contributions workers have made to America's strength, prosperity, and well-being to America. With that, Mayor, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins?
Well, I think this meeting went smoother than the slide at Belle Isle right now, you know. Just saying. First off, I'm going to try to speak into the mic because I know a lot of people at home still can't hear me, but you know, we'll see. Anyways, Mr. Robert Fulton, I, congrats on being our new director for Parks and Recs. I know you're going to do a fantastic job. Just keep us in the loop for everything. Thank you. Please keep supporting our local businesses. I have, did talk to, emailed proper people for our railroad bridge that's starting to crumble on Southfield to, do the mayor with trying to get that fixed, so there is, we're trying, so it's like when people tell me these things, it's like, like I said, last meeting that we forward to, try to forward to the right people so that we can get these things fixed. To Mr. Schleck's fundraiser, again, Tony Sauce, and you know, the amount of pasta I had, I was like rolling over trying to get out of there, but you know, wonderful job. My condolences go to the Mr. Hubler, Richard Hubler's family, past mayor. He, he was like one of the first mayors that, when I was going to these meetings, and so my thoughts and prayers to his family and for all the dedication he's done for the city in the past to our new school year coming up. I hope and pray that we have a safe school year. And what's going on in this world nowadays, I just, I just make sure that you keep our children in our thoughts and prayers, and it's sad to say that, but to go to school and all that stuff. This week we start the Jags football, so go Jags! And the, lastly, to the historical ordinance, I did get some questions answered in our work session. I hope Wayne County or whoever starts updating our misshare of this grant they're going to have, because I know that this wonderful commission would love to get back into the house so that these residents can see the history of our city, and we need to find ways, and if we can't get the grant or we can't do the grant just yet or whatever, I would try to find ways so that this commission can actually do their work and give history to our residents in that house. Other than that, I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of August, again, happy Labor Day, and God bless and stay positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marcos?
I just wanted to make sure everybody did hear this, the municipal credits and the community credits to the city, that's a substantial amount of money, helps our senior citizens. I believe all, all the information is available on his website, helps our senior citizens, disabled, get around to doctors, get their prescriptions, groceries, get transportation, and I believe that's through the Parks and Rec Department, correct? Okay? But it's, it's a lot of money put towards them and help our senior citizens out. I also want to thank Chief Egan for all the things that the Allen Park Police Department do to keep us a really cop-friendly city and keep so involved with the residents and everybody. I don't know of another police department that has loved so much by a city, terrific. And then I wanted to thank the guys from the Water Department. My street, I'm picking on my street because they have, the whole street was underwater, several water main breaks. These guys are out there day after day after day. I got to, you know, I know their family and their grandkids and everybody, so. But these guys are terrific, and they asked me to mention them at the meeting, and I said I did already, but I'll do it again. So they did a great job, they've been out there working their butts off, they just laid sod on one of the breaks that happened months ago, and I got to yell at my neighbor because he didn't water it, it's dying, the grass that he just laid, so I'm really, I'm going to have to water it for him, I think. But anyhow, thank you guys, appreciate it very much. And urge the residents of the city, if you don't come to the meetings, please watch the meetings on YouTube or on the website. Please stay informed, it's very important to know what's going on in the city, so again, thank you all very much. Good night.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Lally?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank the Festivities Committee for doing an excellent job on the street fair and all that help. They did an excellent job. This is probably the first time I helped them as a liaison through the committee, and they worked their butt off, and they deserve a big, big hand of applause, even though they come today. Say it again whenever you see them. Second of all, I'd like to congratulate Robert Fulton for taking the job of the Parks and Recreation Director. I know you'll do a good job. I've known Bob for a long time, and I support you, and just like Charlie says, keep us in the loop and make sure we do, we do everything nice, nice for everybody in the city. Thank you. And third of all, I want to thank Chief Egan for that big, nice parade they had. Not a parade, a ride, a motorcycle ride to honor the, for the honor guard, for the honor guards of the Allen Park Police Department. Tell you what, they did an excellent job. Not only an excellent job, but I was honored that day. I never got honored that way ever since I come back from Vietnam. That was the best thing you did for me. If I died tomorrow, I'm happy. Thank you, thank you, and thank you, and thank you for all that help. Thank you, Chief. Good night.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Lloyd?
I'd also like to extend congratulations to Rob. You know, I know we got the right guy there. You know, great connections to the city, knows what, knows what we need, knows what's to be done there. I know that him and Kyle are chomping at the bit to get started at some stuff, so I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys are going to get done, so thank you very much. Other than that, I want to know how far Chris Egan ran this week? I don't know. Started training yet, Chief? Okay? Okay, good. All right. Looking forward to seeing that gold brick, we keep reminding you about that till October. And other than that?
Yellow.
Yellow? It's gold, is it? All right, all right. Okay, other than that, good night, and have a good week.
Mike, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Festivities Committee. It amazes me to see it's been around 40 years because I still have a shirt somewhere that I worked the 16th Annual Street Fair. I don't know where it is, but the commission, I can honestly say it probably is one of the hardest-working commissions physically, not putting down other commissions, they all have their own unique things, but the physical demand of running around, registering vendors, getting vendors ready, reviewing, it's been amazing. It was originally started by just a group of citizens. It wasn't originally even a commission until, like, it wasn't recognized as an official city commission until maybe the late 90s. But one, I know, I think a couple are, but I know one founding member who I did see not too long ago is still around, and if you ever see her, thank her for starting this tradition, and that is Vi Renna. She's still alive, her and Mimi are still around, and if anyone knew their past, they would know how Allen Park they were. But jumping back to the now time, so everybody on that commission, they're not here now, but I'd really like to say thank you. I have watched it for over 26 years, and I can again say you are the hardest physically working commission I've ever seen in the city, so thank you. Thank you all for coming out, God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Mike. Corver would like to.
Yeah, through the chair, I just want to clarify the, and this goes back to the administrator's report, the Phase One Env- report. The Phase One Environmental is going to be done on the property located, the six eight three four is that tax-for-closed property that the city's purchasing, and then the DDA is going to acquire from the city.
Thank you. I even had Michael on that was wrong. Thank you for that clarification. My closing, as Charles mentioned, Dick Hubler passed away on August 17th. I came into my office and I had an email from a good friend of his, Keith Provo, and the subject was Dick Hubler. And I thought, this is not good news. And I called Keith, and he said, I'm on to let you know that Dick's in hospice. He went in hospice on Monday. And Keith had gone out to the Whitehall area, Portage, Portage area where Dick and Jerry had relocated, and had been able to visit with him and say a few prayers for him. He's known Dick since Dick became the Parks and Recreation Director, and that was Keith's first day on the Parks and Recreation Commission. That went back in 1970. I knew Dick as a neighbor. And we shared many a conversation over his back fence, and he and Jerry were wonderful neighbors. His son Scott coached my daughters in softball. He was also a friend, and he's one of the reasons I'm here today, because when I walked into the Emergency Managers' Advisory Committee, wondering how it was, I got there and I saw Dick smiling at me. I kind of had a feeling he put in a good word for me. As many of you know probably better than I do, he wore many hats. He was Director of Parks and Rec. He was the city administrator, and then he was mayor from 2003 to 2007. He also held a lot of other functions, very active in his community, many, many organizations, including Rotary, the Allen Park Presbyterian. I did attend his funeral yesterday, as did Mr. Lally and Mayor Batakis, and Tina was also there. He was also very involved with the Down River Community Conference Council, and he chaired the creation of the Risk Management Pool for the Michigan Municipal League. And I let all those organizations know, and it was very nice to see that he was well-remembered by them. I think, as I understand, he was ready to go. Jerry died almost a year ago. She died last September. And it was time. And I will miss him. Slightly different. I almost forgot. It was Labor Day, except for the fact that I did look at my calendar and realize that this is probably the last time I can wear white this year, so hence my outfit. There is a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day coming up in October. The railroad bridge, I did contact CN Railroad and see what comes from that. Oftentimes, on these bridges, structurally, they're good, but aesthetically, they look terrible. For those who were not able to attend the autism fundraising on Saturday, again, I would encourage you to find the website, the link, and donate if you are able. I think it is an outstanding cause and a disease that, the treatment of which has come a long way. So, every donation can assist in moving that forward. As far as grants, we're, you know, at the mercy of Wayne County, which seems to be playing musical chairs lately. So, we will see what comes of that. But we are in contact, and we know that the person who is now in charge is known to us, and it's just a question of them holding their meeting and getting together. So, hopefully, that will get done soon. Other than that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally, supported by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned at 6:36. Thank you all very much.